Meeting and correspondence. And then we have two hearings, one at seven and one at seven fifteen. Okay. It is ten past seven at this time. You've all had a chance, have you all had a chance to read the minutes? Did you send them out at all?
Uh, they're here.
They're here, okay. So let's quickly take a look at the minutes and. This is, this is the minutes here, okay.
These are the July minutes.
Right, the July minutes, July nineteenth, right. Okay. Okay. We'll motion for approve the minutes on July nineteenth.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Seven.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, the minutes have been approved. Okay, I'll first.
Before, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, before, uh, I want to make two, two notes under other business.
Okay.
Um, one, uh, regarding replacement of the former administrative assistant. Procedurally, the process requires the board, uh, to identify one of two, uh, options for filling that position. The board can, up to this time, as you know, uh, there has been an advertising process going on in the papers. And Don and I have made an effort to meet any interested candidates who expressed, uh, desire for the position. However, uh, in order for the board to act on a given candidate, uh, and there's only one active candidate right now, the board either has to one, create a subcommittee of more than, more than one person. If the board chooses to do that, the, uh, the process of hiring requires a formal application and a public meeting, hearing of that individual for an interview process, extends the whole process. The other option is for the board to simply designate the chairman as the hiring authority for the board. And if the chair, if the board chooses to do that, the chairman can act independent of, with our review, independent of a public hearing and a public interview process. So, uh, it is, I, I discussed with Sedana, I want to put this on the table for you guys. We would prefer to avoid the public hearing process because it's more difficult for the applicants. It may put someone at, uh, ill at ease. And I certainly think that with Don's experience, he could hire someone, uh, on our behalf. So it would be my suggestion that the board, and we need to take, we just need to vote on this. We have to take an action on this. That the board, uh, designates Chairman Thurston as the hiring authority so that he can go through that process. Any comments on that? You've been through more hires than I have.
No, I would make that motion.
Yeah, okay.
That's second.
Okay.
Okay, the motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, Janet. Okay, one more thing.
Uh, um.
You've got one more thing?
Let me see, uh, I think, hearing. No, uh, the, the only other thing I wanted to point out here is that these are informal, these two, both of these, uh, reviews are informal hearings. They are not formal public hearings or not advertised as hearings. We, our initial review of what each of the applicants are proposing to do suggests that under section five point four point one, uh, the board, uh, this both come to us from the building inspector. The zoning board can act without a public hearing if it believes that the, essentially that the change to the, the proposed change, uh, to the location is not going to, does not further encroach on any setbacks and does not, uh, in any way, um, change the non-conforming status of the structure. In a, in a more so away, so, um, that's what we're hoping to do these under. So we, what we need to do here is simply decide if it, if that's the case under five four one. And if that's the case, we would issue a statement to the building inspector saying that he can issue a, a permit subject to what we've seen anytime he wants. He can't do it until he gets that approval from us. It's possible that in either case we could, we may determine that it could have to go to a public hearing. But based upon our initial review of the information that's being, been submitted to the board, it doesn't look like that's necessary. But that's what the board can decide.
Good. Okay. Okay, Jan.
Okay, you're at one twelve Wethersfield.
Yep.
Now I'm at thirty-four Wethersfield, so where is one twelve?
I'm across, right across street from Nick George.
Uh, okay.
Yeah, right there.
Okay.
I brought, um, Tom, I think, told me I could bring six copies instead of twelve.
Yeah, that's fine, as you can see that sample.
This is my application. There's only one of Butters List, didn't tell me to make twelve.
Yeah, that's fine.
And there's only twenty on there. And then this is, um, some pictures. And then this is my, um, certified plot plan.
Let's see, let's see if, and that will, that will be turned up today.
My house is forty, one to forty-five feet back from the street. And the proposed garage is forty-five to forty-seven. So it's not, it's not in, it's not, um, more than the house. It's within the existing dwelling.
Okay.
So I, I need a special permit.
Oh, I see where the garage is. I thought, I thought the garage was going on the side where your driveway is now. It's going on the other side of the house. Oh, I see, okay, yeah.
So that I can get to the, if you look at this picture right here, so once it goes through the garage, go past the, um, chimney, I can get my handicapped son in his wheelchair up the platform lift to the upper level. So my house is a split level.
Mm-hmm.
Right there. Uh, oh, I did, yeah, yeah. And this is, I didn't, didn't know if you wanted to see this, this is a big picture.
Yeah.
The, tells elevations, because you guys wanted elevations. And then the other pa- picture page might have some elevations.
This is the rear, this is the, that's the front.
This is the front.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the garage right there. Set back from the house. So it's not encroaching further to the road, it's set back about four to six feet.
Okay, the, the, the plot plan that's here doesn't demonstrate a setback as you described.
Yeah, it does. At least I thought it did, but I told, but yeah, see, um, the dwelling is forty-one, see that?
Mm-hmm.
And forty-five, and then the garage is forty-seven.
Uh, yeah, okay, but as you're, the way you're describing it to me, when you say setback, six feet.
Well, I'm sorry, not six feet. What, if you go from the forty-one, it's about six feet.
Okay.
This is forty-seven.
Okay, no, I, you, what you're, here's, here's, I'm going to clarify. When we think of setback, and I understand what you're saying, you're drawing, you're drawing a theoretical straight line across here, from here, and you're saying I'm forty-one five at this corner of the house. And the corner of the garage proposed would be forty-seven one, so that's six feet back.
Right.
Well, that's six feet back from this point. When you say setback from.
Oh, so it's two feet from this.
Well, I thought maybe the whole garage was going to stagger back.
The way my yacht is kind of a curve.
Yep.
This is kind of like, you know. It's definitely not in front of the house, it's, it's not, you know, it's back, it's.
Does it's, is it even with the front of the house?
Yeah, it, well, it looks like it's going to be.
No, it's.
It looks like it is.
From this drawing. Do you have another drawing to suggest otherwise?
Um.
I mean, I, I.
No, it's definitely not, or well, where is the one with the chimney in it? Where's the drawing with the chimney, because that, that'll help within the.
This, I mean, I, I, you know, I, I think, it, I mean, it seems to me arguably, we can accept the fact that if this is the closest point within the setback, if we draw, if we draw a parallel line here a- against the curb, and that's forty-one five, and you're saying that the closest point here is forty-five one, that would be the critical closer point, but it's not closer than the forty-one five. What we thought is that perhaps the garage was actually as a whole physical structure.
Right. Yeah, no, it's.
Is going to sit back another five or six feet against the house.
No, it's just.
It would have to be about five feet. Right, to be within.
That's why I need a special permit.
Yeah, no, yeah, it would, yeah.
Yeah, it would have to be for both, it would have to be at the fifty back, right?
Correct.
To be without, yeah, it's, it's, it's right here at this corner.
So it can't go under five four one.
It's, it's just in front of the fireplace.
Yeah, yeah.
And the fireplace is not on, is on a, not on the very edge of the house, as you can see.
Is, is this the, this is the fireplace you're talking about?
Right, I mean, the fire, whatever they call it, chimney.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, so it's, it's, see, oh, you can see it from this picture. See, there's the front of the house, and then this is the front of the side of the road.
Yeah, we can't do under five four one?
Where's it?
Uh.
Because it's in the fifty.
Yeah, but if we can, uh, look at five four one.
That's what I'm, I.
Read five four one. I didn't bring it with me.
Look at the.
They don't understand, you know.
The board may approve, one, the alteration, reconstruction, or extension of a non-conforming single-family residential structure.
Yes.
Or two, the alteration, reconstruction, or extension of any existing, parentheses, or the construction of any new, end parentheses, attached or detached structure.
Mm-hmm.
That is accessory to such non-conforming single-family residential structure, but only if, A, no part of the proposed alteration, construction, reconstruction, or extension will be located within the minimum setback area established under, established by section six point one point three point one of the bylaws, and B, the proposed alteration, construction, reconstruction, or extension will not result in or increase the structure's non-conformance with the lot coverage or building height limitations established by six point one point five point two and six point five point one. So it fails under A. Because it's in the fifty.
Yeah, but I thought it meant not.
So you have to get a special permit.
Right, so I have to get a special permit, so that's why I'm here. Because i- as long as it's not in, I thought it was understood with Ken Wood, as long as it's not, um, in front of the non-conforming existing building.
That's part of it.
Right.
But there's two parts of it. One is, it can't. Well, hold on, let me read that again, because that doesn't make sense.
Right, that's what I was going to say, because when Donna, I read it, it looked like.
Because I read that, that.
Because Ken said all I need to do is get a yes from you guys tonight. And, um, he will, he will go with more detail. He will give me my build and permit so we can start before winter.
Five four one.
So as long as I'm not in front of the house, it's, it's within the non-conforming existing structure.
Right, that was my, that was my original read of it.
I've read that a couple places in these papers.
Five point four point one, five point four point two.
So that's all I need is a yes from you guys tonight, so that I don't, just need at least a yes.
All right, under five four one, Board of Appeals may approve without the necessity of.
No, no, I'll read that's right.
The changes to non-conforming single-family residential structures described in this section, five four one, specifically, the zoning board may approve the alteration, reconstruction, or extension of a non-conforming single-family residential structure. The alteration, reconstruction, or extension of any existing or the construction, attached, or detached structure that is accessory for such non-conforming family residential structure, but only if, A, no part, no part of the proposed alteration, construction, rest of it, reconstruction, or extension will be located within the minimum setback area established by section six point one point three point one of these bylaws.
Yeah.
And B, the proposed alteration, construction, reconstruction, or extension will not result in the increased structure's non-conformance with the lot coverage or building height limitations established respectively by section six point one point five point two or six point five point one of these bylaws.
So I'm not.
So you can't build in the, you can't build in the non-conforming area.
You can't, right, you can't, you can't construct as you've proposed, uh, without a public hearing. Because your building, as proposed right now, actually moves within five feet of the setback. Because you're, you're between forty-five, you're, you're at forty-five feet, you'd have to be fifty. What you'd have to do is either consider, this is why when you said to me on the phone, oh, no, I'm not touching the front of the building, I'm actually going to be setback. I understand what you were describing, a setback here from the front over here, but you would actually need to move, well, you, you could, you can do one of two things. You would have to, you would have to move the building back to do without a public hearing. You'd have to be.
I can't, I can't do that, it's.
You can't move it back?
No, because then it's, that's a hardship because of bringing my handicapped son.
Okay.
The reason we're doing this right here is because when we come in the driveway with him, um, it's already difficult enough for the bus and the snow in the winter.
Mm-hmm.
The bus is going to come in, it's a twenty passenger, and it just comes right here, so this is the easiest for me, so.
So were you, were you, are, are you also going to be putting a new driveway, obviously new proposed driveway in here?
Um, well, it's.
Because you don't have a driveway that here going to the new garage for access, so I'm assuming you were going to do something in there.
Well, some, yeah, later down the road.
Okay.
Right now, this is, I just got to get this in, I'm hoping to get it in before winter. But I thought the way you read that rule, I was all set, because as long as it doesn't go on the existing non, in front of the existing non-conforming, even that first part, if it doesn't go in front of the existing non-conforming, which is, my existing is forty, forty whatever, forty-one feet. As long as it, or forty-five.
Forty, forty-five at that point.
Right, as long as it doesn't go in front of that existing, then I should be all set for you guys to approve it.
No, it's, it's so, this is the fifty-foot line.
But if I was beyond the fifty foot, I wouldn't even have to be here for anything, right? I wouldn't need a special permit for anything.
No, no, and the, see, what we're, what we're trying to, we're not saying to you, you can't do this.
Right.
What we're saying to you is that you can't do it without a public hearing.
You can't do it tonight.
We were trying to do it without a public hearing.
We can do it next month.
We can do, we can tell you, we can tell you.
But we can't do it tonight.
What's a public hearing?
A, a public hearing means that we have to notify the public, uh, formally. We have to put an ad in the local paper, identify all the Butters.
Yeah, but, but, but Ken said, if you said yes tonight, we can do the public hearing, we can notify the Butters. He said that fifteen day and thirty, long as you guys say yes tonight, he will give me the permit so we can start. But the public hearing, and that's the fifteen, and there's another thirty day thing with the state or something? He said that's okay, long as I can get that you guys agree that what I'm doing is okay.
I, I don't, I, I, what, what I, what I think we need to discuss here on your behalf is whether or not the, the rest of the board is comfortable with what you're proposing here, because that's what we'd have to look at in a public hearing.
Are you guys comfortable with it?
What, but, bear, bear with me a second. However, you should be aware that even, even if the board concurs, that okay, if this is what you've got to do, you're not encroaching any further. We understand the need, um, and, and, you know, I think the board would like to help you get this done, okay? But the board can't legally act without a public hearing. If, if you go and we say, file all this information with this, we'll have a public hearing in October, and, you know, at that point in time, there'll probably also be a full board, so there'll be at least one, if not two more members that will review this as well. And at that point, we would, um, review it and actually draft a deci-, uh, vote a decision to give you a special permit to do this.
Yeah.
Keeping in mind then, that all the Butters will have been notified.
Right.
Okay, and they'll have an opportunity, anybody who wants to have an opportunity can speak. So if there's something that either you don't know or we don't know that's come to before the board's attention.
Right. I don't think, all my neighbors, especially the ones right around me, they all know what I'm doing.
That's fine.
They actually have tried to give me some ideas on what to do.
Okay, that's fine.
The guy next door to me, he, right here, he, um, does, um, um, commercial construction.
Okay, we, we would just caution you that then typically, and then typically, a decision would be drafted and signed at the following month's meeting.
Yeah, that's what Ken said.
Okay, so.
He said, as long as I get a yes tonight, then we'll do, do, do what you said, and then do the next part. And notify all the Butters.
Okay. That, how, all I'm saying is, there are legal, you're at, if you do any actions with, with the building inspector or anything else, prior to that decision, ultimately clearing, um, the appeal period, which is a period of twenty days after the decision is recorded with the town clerk. So, hi, just let's say hypothetically, a son, a decision is voted, approved on October nineteenth, thereabouts. And then the, the written decision is filed, let's say, by November first, okay? If that were the case, there would be a twenty-day window in which anybody, for any reason.
Right.
Could say stop.
Right, and Ken said, as long as you guys said yes, he will, he will let me have the build permit, and I, I'm the one taking the chance on that.
And that, that's what you should be aware, because even if you get a building permit, even if the building department grants you the permit.
Right. Right.
You should just be aware that an appeal, appeal of the decision, and it probably won't occur, but appeal of the decision could force you to stop.
Right.
Ken could be asked to come to you and say.
Right, that's what Ken explained to me, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, fine, okay, okay. Do you have any further questions?
I don't.
Do you have any concerns?
No.
No.
But it's just, it'll be done.
Right.
And I don't think it's going to be difficult, but.
No.
It'll be done next month.
Right, yeah.
Okay, one, one other thing that we need from you, for public hearing, is a check for two hundred and fifty.
Yeah, I have it right here. Okay, so can I get a yes tonight?
Yeah.
Yes.
Good.
Yeah, you can, you can tell Ken, and Ken can discuss, uh, we'll, we'll draft.
I just need a pen.
We'll draft for you to Ken, uh, a letter, uh, confirming our review of the proposed, uh, addition. And that there will be a hearing for a special permit at our October, hmm, it is October, right?
Yes.
Two hundred and fifty?
Eighteenth.
October eighteenth meeting, um, and that the board anticipates, uh, granting a special permit at that point.
Do I have to go to that?
Um, yes, yes.
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 Okay, I just need to know, because I, like, I have to get help for my handicapped son tonight.
That's fine.
I don't have help at night. Who, who do I make this check out to?
Uh, Town of Raleigh.
Town of Raleigh, okay.
With something like this, is it worth getting a draft decision kind of?
Yeah.
For the works.
Yeah.
For next meeting.
For the, yeah, yeah, we can, we can discuss, we have all the material here, um.
I think it's going to be a.
You can, you can take those plans with you, but you can, but these others, can you leave with the board?
Yeah, I made copies for, I made copies.
Okay, fine. Leave copies of any, anything you can leave, copies of the board, that's fine. Yeah, you know what? This is all signed here. You got all the sign-offs, dated, okay, this can be, this can go with the application. Attach that application, we'll keep that whole thing, that way she'll have the formal application. And we've got materials.
Oh, it's elastic, I hate to wear elastic, oh, it's around my wrist.
Okay, we'll set this up through October.
October eighteenth.
October eighteen.
Seven o'clock?
Uh, no, let's say, uh, seven fifteen?
Seven fifteen.
Yeah.
Seven fifteen, okay. Have all your pens done, so you can write that down? So that's going to be ten, eighteen, is that a Thursday?
Yes, always a Thursday.
So this is going to be July four two.
July four two.
Yeah.
Can you write that on mine?
I can.
Five point four point two, is that what you did?
Yep.
Yeah. Sorry, I got messy handwriting.
No, that's right. And does the other people need copies?
Uh, no, I have copies, um, and this, I think we're all, I think we're all set, we have the application, we have this. Bring that, bring that stuff.
You get the sign-up, you get the sign-offs.
Yeah.
Should we grab copies for, um, Dave and Phil, if anything?
I should provide it them, um.
Well, I have them here, I'll, you, you want two more?
Two more, yeah.
Just leave them in there.
We'll leave, yeah, leave them with me, and then I'll distribute them.
Two, two, two of these.
Two of each, yeah.
And then two of these?
Yeah.
Okay.
Excellent, all right, that's fine.
So you guys said yes, right? So, um, I can talk to, well, won't, it'll be, I've got a.
Jan, why don't you give it to the, to the public, the, the, the.
Oh, yeah.
About a clock left.
I'm giving you my color and all, because my color.
That's fine, we don't, we don't need color.
Thank you.
So I can, I can, you'll draft something for Ken Wood?
We will, we will draft something.
There's a lot more detail that has to go to Ken anyways.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, he'll make the color on all those details.
Okay, this is awesome.
Okay?
Yeah, thanks.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you, Don.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nope.
My call there.
Okay.
Uh, yeah.
Just going to file on there, give them to them.
Yeah. All right, good, you keep that file, I'll keep these, I'll keep the file for the guys. That's mine.
You want the check?
No, no, you keep the check. Yeah, I can't do anything with the check. Yeah, I can't do anything with the check, I don't give any money.
So I need to take, take that over.
Yeah, ready.
Okay.
Okay, next one, eighty-one hillside. You have all that, right? Hmm? You have eighty-one hillside.
So you're here for eighty-one hillside?
I am, yeah. I dropped off a couple, two copies, I hope you guys have.
Yeah, I feel.
My name's Kevin Kumpf, I'm a preneur builder, so I'm here on behalf of Eric Shoemaker, eighty-one hillside, and, uh, he proposed to do a twelve-by-sixteen sunroom addition on the back of his home for the twelve-by-fourteen deck. Uh, we got all the sign-offs, and I went to Ken Wood, he said that, um, it's become a non-conforming lot because of the zoning change and the minimal lot size.
Mm-hmm.
Um, from what I can tell, it doesn't encroach anymore on any side setbacks or rear setbacks.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's just on the back of the home, um, so I was hoping to get a special permit on his behalf to, to do that construction.
Alright, so this would be under five four one.
I believe so.
So it'll probably be the twenty-five percent, be the only real possible.
I don't think you can close, do you have the, the plug in?
So you, you got the plan?
I, I still, yeah, you got, that's why I ask, cause I, I left, I left somewhere in the truck.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, uh.
Right, that's our only constraint.
That'd be the height, but I doubt that's.
Nope, it's a one-story, it's, um, it's, it's an open deck, uh.
Yeah, here we go.
Yeah.
So Kenneth Kumpf, uh, sign off, you name Kumpf?
Kumpf, yeah, sounds like an F.
Kumpf, okay. From Eric Shoemaker, one thirty, one fifteen, Duett Street.
No, actually, that's my address, the.
That's yours?
Yeah.
Okay.
Eighty-one hillside.
Eighty-one hillside, Raleigh, uh, and he is applying for a special permit under section five point four point one, the Raleigh project with so many bylaws, which is what, uh, we tried to do in the previous case. Uh. This is assessor's map nineteen, block one, block four, premises of the line district, premises affected over line of district none. Deeds is recorded as itself, red street deeds, one six five three seven, and page two eight three. Um, asking for a special permit, no, it has a variance, a special permit, there's only been, relief ever been requested for the premises. The answer is no. Description proposed work or use construct twelve-by-sixteen sunroom addition and twelve-by-fourteen open deck on the rear of home. Reason for the request as follows, zoning requirements for lot size have changed. Single-family home was constructed, owners would like to add sunroom and deck here of home, listing lot size is forty thousand four hundred and fifteen square feet. Signed, Ken Kumpf. And he's got his sign-offs from everybody. And he's got, uh, clearance, uh, that he did.
This is one I just sent to him.
I think I had it already signed off.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's.
Yep, that's, that's, yeah.
I should just check it.
Yep, they're all, yeah, okay. Okay, let's see what the, uh.
Is it, is, is the deck, can a, um, is the sunroom I'm serving is, is, um, uh, li- like on a slab, like on surface?
It's gonna be on a foundation, it's gonna be stored underneath, cause it's, you know, kind of raised up on the back, so it's gonna be stored underneath concrete foundation.
Okay.
Then the open deck will be on pier footings.
I see, I'm.
With like a lattice around it or something.
How, how, how I want?
Leaving Glen Street and starting up on hillside, this is on the right-hand side?
It is, uh, Glen.
On the left.
Yeah, well, if I'm, if I'm coming from Georgetown, from, that's where I come in.
You're coming from Georgetown, so you're coming down Weathersfield.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'd bail left. Correct, and then I'd bail left onto hillside.
Right.
And then it's maybe half to three-quarters of a mile on the right, there's a little cul-de-sac next to him, I forget the name of the road.
Okay, so it's on the right-hand side?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Coming from Georgetown.
Yep.
Yeah, if you're going down Glen.
Yeah, Glen is the, where, the other end of hillside goes in the Glen.
Oh, right, okay, yep, yep.
Yeah. It's, I think, isn't it down near the end of the?
It's not too far from the end, yeah, but there's a little fork in the road, we, that's got a big boat up there or something, yeah.
Yeah, there's a fork right there, Glen.
So this is the existing structure, and this is the post. This is the sunroom addition, this is the deck.
Is it now, so is this then, i- it curls space under it?
Y- yeah, well, yeah.
Like two feet, five feet, or?
Uh, I think it's gonna be about a six-foot, and I don't want it there, call it a full basement if you want.
Okay, that's six. Yeah, okay.
If we can get it, that's what we'd like to do, but, so that's, so that's living space will be open to the house and heated, and then this will be, um, the open deck here.
Do, do we know, uh.
Is this a big tank?
Yeah, about twelve and a half feet from the septic tank, and I put that.
Do we know the square footage of the, of the house now?
Uh, they can give you that, it's, I'll be looking up.
Yeah.
Probably give you a.
I mean, it's not, there's no way, what is it, what's the lot size, forty thousand?
Yeah, so it's twenty-five percent of forty, forty thousand.
So it's ten thousand?
It's not a ten thousand square fo- footprint, no, it's, it's probably around thirteen to fourteen hundred square foot footprint, it's a two-story colonial.
Okay.
So this is, I think this is, um.
Yeah.
Twenty-eight by thirty-eight, or twenty, twenty-six by thirty-eight, and I think this is like sixteen by, uh, twenty.
That's a two-car garage.
No, actually, uh, the way it works now is a two-car garage under here, this is, um, just a wing, not a living room.
Mm-hmm. What, no, but it's twenty-five percent of the existing structure.
The lot coverage is not.
No, I mean, um, oh, you're right.
It's twenty-five. Yeah, why am I thinking lot? Yeah, no.
I don't know why, um, but it's not, it's not gonna be.
Yeah, no, in other words, you could, in other words, you, you.
You can't add more than twenty-five to size, to the size of the building.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah.
Right, so if you have a five thousand square foot building, you can put three thousand square feet on it.
Right, right.
That's what I mean.
Twelve, twenty-nine on it or something, yeah.
Right, whatever that number is, exactly. But you know, you're, you, you've got about two, two, three hundred and sixty-five feet, uh, square feet, uh.
This is where the house is?
Yeah, oh, yes, that's the back of the house.
Yeah, it's not gonna be anywhere.
This is a hundred and ninety-two square feet, I don't know if you count the deck as part of that as well, but.
No, I just, it's separate, yeah. But we should, but, uh, but since it's raised and it's not on the ground, it's not like a patio.
Nope, no, it's just a open deck underneath, we could put some lattice, that's all.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you have to keep this duck, so.
Yeah, by all means, by all means.
Yeah.
So the, is there a deck there now?
There's an existing deck that we're moving there, yeah.
Moving on, okay. So it's a twenty.
There is a deck there over this entire area?
Not over the entire area, it's, um, it's about, it's only, it's only like a twelve.
Oh. Okay, so there's a small deck back there, ten by ten by that.
So what, you're going Google Earth or something to do this?
No, just, uh, assessor's office.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, cool. So it's, um, basically a twenty-six by, uh, fifty. Yeah, okay. Footprint.
So thirteen hundred square foot footprint, basically, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and then how much are you adding on?
Hundred and ninety-two square feet on the sunroom and.
Right. Yeah, so that's not.
Yeah.
Definitely made it better. Um, go to, uh, yeah. Um, um, I, um, I think, I don't have any problem with those, I think, this is the only thing I have to really be concerned about is what's here. What's back here, nothing?
You've got, you've got a pool back there, and patio, and more, more than the end, way back here. I don't know, but the, but the pool must be in front of the septic system, so, yeah.
Yeah, okay, oh, this is the leaky back here, that's what that is, okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh. Where, where are neighbors? I did look at this on Google Earth, but I didn't wanna go.
This is a, this is a, sort of a roadway.
There's a, there's a little street in here, so sorry.
Yeah, and there's another lot over here, so, yeah, with the house.
Well, this is innocuous enough in my mind, what do you guys think?
I don't see anything wrong with it.
I don't either. I said we don't. You're welcome.
Uh, it, it's insignificant enough so that it's likely the shoemakers, who I don't know, have probably not necessarily discussed that they're even thinking about doing something like that.
I asked him to, I asked him to talk to his neighbors, and he said they all seem to be fine.
Oh, okay.
I, I think the house is only nineteen or twenty years old, and then the zoning change came in from forty to sixty thousand square foot lots or something like that.
When did that happen?
I think that's what triggered this.
When did it go to sixty? Is that eighty-five percent, what he says? When did it go to sixty?
Oh, God.
Oh, you know, Katrina gave us that before, that, last night, we could have, it's in that little compilation she provided.
Uh, but that's the trigger for this, right, that now, is now it's a non-conforming lot.
You still have that, I didn't bring it, I had it in that other file.
Is that what you?
I just may have, just I picked, oh, everything in here.
So this is him right here.
I see the pool.
That's the other one, so he's got a neighbor here, this looks open, there's a neighbor way back.
There's a big field here with house back.
Yeah.
And then you can just.
Oh, so you wanna go right in here somewhere, no?
Yeah, it's, it's way up in.
Up in this area?
Yep, right, yeah, but obviously there's a, with the addition of the houses or the wing of the house, it's kind of up the corner of that over. Really be, I don't, over here.
Oh, I see, that shows the existing deck, so that's all going.
Yeah, this little deck here is going, this is just something like patio, it looks like that was down flat, that patio, and then this pulls back here.
Is that flat, I see. I see. I see.
So we're gonna put this, uh, you can barely see the little deck right there.
So he's, he's actually got, this looks like he's got some sort of a privacy fence here.
Yeah, yeah, he's got a fence.
This is, this is obviously an in-ground, so he must have a little fence in there here, yeah.
Yeah, his, his whole yard is, is a fence.
Oh, yeah, it could go all the way around the end, okay.
Yeah, people aren't even gonna be able to see the thing.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Let's see, there's, uh.
Exactly, yeah.
Let's see, let's see, uh, at, uh. Jamie, that'd be six, uh.
You think it was in the nineties?
Yeah, it was in the nineties.
So it was something lifted?
Right, something lifted, right. Well, there was a big joke going around, we didn't, we didn't think that.
Yeah.
We could, we had to get a special permit, I think, so we held.
Here, increasing memory of French first century district twenty-four, increasing memory of French for outline district in forty, and.
Nineteen ninety-nine.
Nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-nine, right after my son was born, um, okay. So, yeah, that's, you're right, that's, that is what's triggered it, nineteen ninety-nine, so.
Yeah.
All right, well, do you, you guys have any issues? You got, you, you think we're fine? I, you know, if these, I don't think there's anything consequence here, I don't think, I think we can do this under five four one.
Yep, five four one.
Uh, is fine, so, uh, we'll, uh, we'll go ahead and draft a letter to Ken.
Okay.
Uh, indicating that we've reviewed the plans as submitted. It will say that if there is any change, if you and Ken, for whatever reason beyond our knowledge, come to a need to change what is shown here, you'll need to come back.
I understand, yeah.
Just, just so that we can.
Yeah, just keep everything within this footprint, and we're fine.
Yeah, and that's what, 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 we're gonna tell him, that as long as that's.
Actually, what, what we'll get, you'll, you'll get, you'll, you'll get a, a, uh, special permit from us under five, five.
Yeah, so, so a special permit, yeah.
Yeah, but without, without the need for a hearing.
Okay.
Do you even need, is it even a special permit, or is it just a sort of approval letter, I'm not even sure it uses a special permit, I might as well.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think it's just an approval letter, Tom.
Changes to non-conforming.
Can be approved.
Who may approve without the necess- necessity of a public hearing, the change to non-conforming single-family veterans' structures described in section five four one. Not duration even in all of it, yes, so it's just a matter of approval.
Which is a simple letter to the building inspector?
I'll, I'll send him a letter, which, uh, Don will sign.
Okay.
Uh, and, uh, we'll send you a copy.
I appreciate it, yeah.
Okay.
And how long does something like that take? You just hired a secretary, eh?
Yeah.
He's the secretary.
I'm not pushing this, just so I can tell my client, that's all, you know, the way to do this and schedule it.
Uh. Let's see, I would say the latest would be, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, next week.
Okay, great, next week, perfect.
Is that fine? Is that okay?
Yeah, excellent.
Okay.
Great.
Yeah.
Anything else you need from, from us at all?
No, can you leave, what can you leave with this?
Uh, those two packages are yours, I have a copy in my office.
Okay, good.
Thanks for the.
Uh, uh, it's, whatever, as long as we have a package, that's fine, yeah.
Okay.
Excellent, okay, well, okay, thanks, take care.
Thank you very much, pleasure dealing with you guys, thanks, yeah, nice to meet you, thank you, thanks again.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
May I see that?
You're back.
You must have, you can turn this down from satellite stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow, oh, yeah.
What, do you wanna see where Millie is right now?
No, I've got. See, see, this home, what I've still got is a, is a regular cell phone, that doesn't take pictures, okay?
Yeah. Well, these things are incredibly sophisticated, they, man, much of it is past me too, I gotta be honest with you.
Yeah. And.
That's why I usually buy, bring the iPad, it's bigger.
Plus, plus you have to know how to, what you, you got to know that it's possible to do what you do.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Yeah, which is tough.
No, but, but as you saw, you know, here we are debating the actual square footage of that house, and instead of, oh, do you have a plan, do you have it, you go right to the assessor's office records in sixty seconds, and we have the data.
Yeah.
It's incredibly useful.
Yeah.
It's just incredibly useful stuff.
Yeah, well, because I've been seeing this on the, on the historic district, Sarah's got one, she's got the big one.
Oh, this was. Oh, he's got the, you mean the iPad?
Yeah, she's got the iPad, and she goes out, if something's coming in on it, she goes out and takes pictures of the whole thing, and so she's got it at the board. Or maybe she doesn't go take pictures, maybe she goes up and pulls it down.
She can. Yeah, she could, yeah.
Yeah, she must.
She could, yeah.
Yeah. Holy smoke, yeah, you couldn't know how to do it.
Keep in mind, satellites were put up there not for fun, but that's fine.
And they're working well.[1691.58]
They are, I was gonna say. You can, you can get all kinds of information.
Okay.
Oh, we got the last thing, yeah.
The last thing we agenda for tonight is Marion Wade, forty B, cop behind the permit.
Oh, yeah.
And we have a letter here from Mr. Decouls. Okay, dated September eighteenth, two thousand.
Twenty four years, right.
Wow. Rowley's only Board of Appeals, P O box two seventy five thirty nine Central Street, Rowley, Mass. one nine six nine. Dear zoning Board of Appeals members, at the last meeting with Rowley's only Board of Appeals, you requested that we submit our plans for review to the Rowley Conservation Commission. We have been redesigning the stormwater system from a detention pond design to a subsurface design using plastic chambers manufactured by Coltech Incorporated located in Brookfield, Connecticut. This design is superior to detention ponds that are breeding grounds for mosquitoes and the possible danger for children. The plastic chambers are very strong, durable, and have used under paved parking lots for storm water storage. We have been working with the Coltech local sales engineer Bob Goodrich from nearby Essence to develop a design that does not increase the existing stormwater runoff in here at the end of Marion Wade. But unfortunately, he developed serious illness and had to retire from the company. We are now working with his replacement on a coastal final design which will, which we will submit to the Rowley Conservation with a copy to you. Kindly continue public hearing for the Marion Wade project through your October eighteenth, two thousand twelve meetings, and very sincerely yours, John J. Decouls. Okay, uh, so we have the uh, request to continue this to October eighteenth. Your motion to accept this letter of, uh, request to continue public hearing from October eighteenth, two thousand twelve.
I saw moved.
Second.
May it move, it's been moved in second, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Twelve.
Aye.
What's the, is the, nine?
Nine, yeah.
Right, one.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have any other business coming forward, boy?
Uh, Mike is just, Mike is just questioning whether or not we should have a motion on each of the prior actions. I don't think we need on the five four, 'cause that's just, we just scheduled a, we we've just scheduled, we decided to schedule a public hearing. So the board reviewed it in formal hearing and said you gotta come back, so, and we have an application, so we're doing that. No, no action was taken there. Question is, is on Hillside.
That's fair.
Should we, should we take a, should we make a motion to draft, to?
Ye- yes, we should, we should.
Okay, okay. Um, then why don't you ask for a motion to direct me to draft?
Okay, alright, we open, we open that.
Okay.
We reopen that uh, hearing.
Mm-hmm.
To uh, make that motion.
Okay, so a motion is, so, you wanna make a motion?
Uh, sure, a motion to um.
To direct.
To direct, uh, are you doing it?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, uh, to direct, um.
Clerk.
The clerk to draft a letter to um, Ken Ward indicating that the proposal for Eighteen Hillside uh, has been approved by the board under section five point four point one.
Okay.
Having met all the criteria under five point four point one.
Okay, stop.
Okay, do we hear that second?
Second.
Okay.
Calls in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, I got it.
Okay.
Now we have to do the same thing for the previous one?
No. No, because all we did, all we did with that is decide to have a public hearing.
Oh, right, right.
Right.
There's, there's no action.
I think that's right. I think that's right, it's a informal request which we.
Yeah. We're not, we're, you know.
We're not agreeing to, we're.
We're not agreeing to do anything.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's no other business before the board, do I entertain the motion to adjourn?
Yeah, did you guys get the update on the Hyman process? That we have one active candidate that we're not, that we're considering.
That email that you sent the other day, or no? Was there an update after that?
Uh, there was an update after that. Um, uh, neither of those earlier candidates, um, well, all of those earlier candidates, um, are still being considered. Uh, we are looking at a number of potential candidates. Uh, we have re-advertised. We have reached out through the uh, town, through the Pine Grove School, and I've, I met with the principal who knows a lot of the families in town, and asked her, Chris Neeland, to uh, advised her this status of the position, and asked her to reach out to anybody she thinks who might also be a suitable candidate. Um, that was earlier this week. Uh, we'll see if it percolates something. Um, that's the status of it is right now.
Gee, we're on TV, why don't we put a plug in for?
Well, certainly, certainly the board has an open position for an administrative assistant um, that involves about ten uh, hours a week uh, of total time. One week of that um, work time will involve a Thursday night meeting like this one, which can be anywhere from as brief a window as this, an hour or so, uh, but could be as long as three hours. In those cases, the daily work week will be adjusted accordingly, appropriated, so your time stays within the ten hours. Um, yeah, there's an office here in the attics where you will work, and you'll have, you need to have certain basic computer skills. There's information about the position on the town website. We invite anyone who's interested to uh, look for that information and uh, send a resume or contact either the board selectmen or the zoning board directly.
Is it split now? Does it drop, is it still, is it still?
No. No, it's an independent position. It's no longer a shared position.
Okay.
So it's a single, it's a single position.
Okay.
And that's it?
Very good.
I do not have any other business.
Okay. We have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor of adjournment? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Okay, we are adjourned.